We're going to get a motion to open the meeting.
So we get second.
Move the second, we open the meeting, all those in favor? First order of business, I think, is to welcome our new town manager, who's been here before. Been in his desk now for a week.
Four days.
Four days. So we're very happy to see you, Danny. Happy to have you in the seats.
Thank you.
First piece of business is Friends of Belgrade Lake Village, the escrow account. And I'm not sure what that is.
That's the issue there is how much money the Friends of Belgrade Lake Village put into an account before they were able to pay for the replacement and maintenance of the disciples.
I think they were going to go out and stud- do a study and come back with data that would tell us, in a better fashion, what it was we really need to do.
My idea, going down to the meeting, not playing a meeting with them, to know that, believe you, or there was a board, or that bike, and some of that was-
And Ernie Mer- Ernie Merkies.
There was a proposal of a certain amount of money, and that hasn't been finalized because it's lower than the amount that- and they signed an agreement that said, "You guys can set it." So we have to come to a decision.
Yep. And as I understand it, they'll come in when they're ready?
Well, yes, I'm hoping to make them ready soon.
Okay, well, they have a meeting Thursday of this week, and I think that's on their agenda.
I think they're aiming at the next.
We need to table that, or we just-
I would table it for now and-
I'll make that motion.
And second, move the second, all those in favor tabling it?
I think they're aiming to get in the next meeting.
Yeah.
Under new business, Aflac Insurance Company, I believe they were going to-
Just disregard that. Just disregard that, they're not coming in, and I'll be meeting with them. It's just an insurance sales pitch.
Food pantry, security upgrade, you should, in your books, you have a letter from the Belgrade Rome Special Eats Food Pantry, and what they're saying is that the system as installed does not communicate with the home base, so there are times when that food pantry or that building isn't really monitored. What they need is a hundred ninety-nine dollar piece of electronics that will use radio communications to communicate with the company.
Is this the company we presently use?
Yes.
Yeah.
Seco Security. Used to be called Main Securities.
Okay, that's what I thought it was.
And the pantry recognizes Belgrade's generosity in this matter, would appreciate any assistance they could provide.
Do we have money any place to do this?
We'll look for the money, but the agreement says that we'll maintain that security system and everything. So I think we're obligated to do it. And I believe the- I'll talk- I think I had a chance to talk to Gary, I meant to, but I think that's a facilities maintenance issue, so we probably do that facilities maintenance.
I'll make a motion, we do this.
Second. Move the second, and we give them the money to do this?
Check with facilities maintenance.
Yeah, with-
Yeah.
With facilities maintenance for the money.
Yeah.
Any discussion? Mr. Barrett?
I want to say something, but after will be fine. After we have a vote.
All those in favor, one hundred ninety-nine dollars, five zero.
What I wanted to say, since the town manager's new here, if you're going to refer to somebody named Gary, use a last name too, would you please? Since we have a lot of-
Gary Goss, I'm sorry.
Okay, we have a lot of-
Thank you. I'll remember to do that.
Thank you, sir.
Next item on the agenda, the center for all season's fence. They want approval to use capital reserve for payments. They included a list of things they need for the fence. Total of that order is seven forty-eight thirty-one, and they want to take it out of their capital reserve.
Where's this fence going to be?
I believe it's on the property line on the other side of the pool, where the fence has been poorly maintained and is down. They want to keep that. I guess that's- they want to keep that separation.
Is this something now people are going to put up?
No, I don't- that was a good question. I had assumed that, but I don't know the answer, it's a good question.
Find out.
Yeah, I probably ought to know that.
Well, I should have asked, I'm sorry.
Nope, that's fine.
But if you approve to take it out of the fund, I'll certify that out, like you know.
I don't have a problem doing that, I'll make that-
It's not a- in an area where we plow or anything like that.
No, it's right where the fence used to be.
I don't want to take it-
It's down by the wood line, actually.
Oh, okay.
Have a motion on the floor to accept this, is there a second?
Second.
Move the second in. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by five zero. Now, the next item is the newsletter approval. The newsletter is in here. I believe we had asked that we review it. I don't know if we've asked to review it every time, or if we asked to review it when there was a letter in it.
That's what the policy says.
Review it every time? Mr. Katchel?
If I may comment, that's fine. You guys can do that all the time. I understand the reasoning behind it, but I like to think that it's an extra task that's put on you, your select board members, and I think that I can ensure that you don't get into the issues that you had when you passed that policy. But I'll bring forward a new policy to you if you want, but you're leaving the requirement that you review it, unless you want to do it. It's only a good handle.
I tend to agree, I think there's a new sheriff in town now, and we don't have to have the same concerns.
And it holds up the newspaper, or the newsletter as well.
I think we're going to have to redo the policy.
I will redo it.
Well, the policy, I think we had agreed it would be one page per the patent, and there's two pages on a couple of the patent.
Yeah, I'll check that out.
So I think that's what we agreed, keep the cost down.
Yeah, keep the contract.
So unless there's something that really is urgent for this particular month, or I don't know, whatever, I guess.
I will- I will go through that, and whatever the new policy turns out to be, that probably will be, most of what we got, minus the review, I'll make sure that we follow.
I do have a question about it, I was reading it over. On the notes from the town manager, the last paragraph is telling me there'll be some seasonal opportunities available for cemetery and recreation. Shouldn't that be your name, not Melanie's?
Well, that was- remember, this was written prior to-
Yeah, I know, I understand, but-
Yes, in the future, Rosie.
Should that be changed before- or can that be?
No, I didn't leave it there, just because I wasn't hearing what all that stuff was.
Okay.
But I understand what you're saying, but I think people-
They're jumping conclusions, I think, that's okay.
If you want to change it, we can change it.
Okay, you're happy with it, I'm happy with it, no worry.
And what we're looking for is the town manager to come forward with a new-
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
And the second?
Yep.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I'll have that for the key.
Is this going to go-
I have a question, which was from that meeting, because we used to allow some of the nonprofits to put stuff in here, but we eliminated that. So is that still going to stand?
That's up to you.
I mean, I'm just checking with the board. I got some plaque from the Friends of Library.
Sure you did.
Well, no, I'm just saying.
I hadn't thought about it.
And I just said, "Well, that's what the board had agreed to."
Everybody except the Friends of Library.
Yeah, well, that was the thing, and I said, "Well, if we accept, we allow you, then we have to allow all the others."
I think if we leave that up to the discretion of the town manager, she's going to be the one that's really checking it. And as long as it doesn't get out of hand, as long as it doesn't be mostly nonprofits, maybe you want to limit, maybe two a month, or three a month, or whatever.
Well, he's going to come in with the new, what's the-
The policy.
New policy, the policy, we can look at it, add to it, or retract from it, when the time comes.
I guess if it's a nonprofit that's just a profit, a nonprofit that supports a town organization, and maybe we can take it and go with it.
What I'll do is, I will forward this to you all, by your turn, just so you can review it, comment, and all that, and then bring it back.
Danny, did you get your answer on whether this was printed on both sides or not?
It will be printed on both sides, it's just that it was-
That was a question, and I couldn't remember if it was or wasn't.
The only other comment I have, do whatever you will, some better organization of the ads, you know, they seem to be here, there, and everywhere, there in margins, or in the bottom.
I think- I think that was a preference on the part of the previous town manager, we've talked about that, and so I let it go forward. We made them the consistent size, because they were varying sizes, but now it's a business card size, and I think what I would do is put it on one page in the back of the report.
Yeah, that's what I'd do.
But that's just something that we have to finalize, I figured I'd let it go forward and-
So do we have to approve this tonight, so we can get right out?
We've already voted, and we're just going to leave it. When Danny gives his- what, you mean that we have to approve the-
Yeah, what we've got here.
They always approve it because she said they accepted, that he had signed it, remember?
I would just make a comment that if you put them all on one page, basically, people will look right over it by sprinkling throughout. I think you're giving a better service to the people who put the ads in it.
That's something we can-
If you're going to do that, at least put them all at the bottom or something like that.
Yeah, we can do something. Thank you for the comment.
What the newspapers used to do, and they still do actually, is they basically put the ads all throughout their newspaper, and then they fill it in with a copy. The fact that stories end in certain places is not an accident.
I hear you, Howard, we'll work something out.
All right, we have voted on this, it's approved. We'll have a new document from the town manager talking about the newsletter. Next thing we have to do is, we have the library trustee department, Barbara Allen. Those are separate from your books, I believe, what you have set aside. Barbara Allen.
I'll make that motion.
And we have a second, and it should be accepted. Any discussion?
Now, that's going to take us a while, but no.
Oh, is that right?
I said, "Well, that's going to take us a while," but no, we're all set.
Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Congratulations, Barbara, and thank you for now for volunteering to do this.
That's what you're saying now.
Yeah.
We have, the next one looks like it's going to be take a while.
Yeah.
It's going to be, what can I say? Mr. Bruce Galush is volunteering for the cemetery committee.
I'll make that motion.
It's been moved, is there a second? Move the second, and it'd be accepted, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Congratulations, Bruce, and thank you for all that you do, plus volunteering for something like this. Without volunteers-
Can we just go back to the newsletter for one more second?
Oh, God.
I'm just not quite clear. I know I made the motion to let Danny change things around, but this letter needs to go out now. So we're not going to have his change till the next meeting?
That's right.
It's the policy, he's going to rewrite the policy.
I know.
We'll look at the whole, I command my school.
Ernie, I mean, Ricky, Ricky.
That's all right.
I think I know what you're getting at. In the news from the town manager, there's a secretary that says I'll be coming on board.
Right.
So there's that announcement there, if that's what you're on.
No, wait. I'm taking it that this newsletter needs to go out, like tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay. Our current policy says we got to approve for you this, but now we're changing the policy, so it won't affect this one, it'll be the next one.
Exactly.
Am I correct on that?
Yes.
So we're going to approve this in the way it is.
Yes.
Okay, that's all I wanted to get clear.
Yes.
Thank you. I'm done.
Back in your books, we have a liquor license for Sadie's Restaurant LLC, which we voted on their liquor licenses, this is for a private event that they want to hold, starting the tenth of this month.
Why do we need, if it's at their place, and they have a liquor license, why do we-
The- I asked about that too, the liquor inspector said it's going to be outside, instead of inside, get a permit.
Oh, this is their party.
They're just a- anything.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to approve it.
So approve, is there a second?
A second.
Move the second in, any discussion? Danny?
Just one comment, and it's fine the way it is. We had had a policy back in two thousand six that was approved, that delegated, not two thousand six, it was two thousand seven, that delegated these type of simple licenses to the town manager. And it was delegated under Title 28, subsection 1076, and then section 17. And that's something, one, it doesn't hold up the person if they come in kind of short, it doesn't hold them up, two, it's one thing that doesn't have to go on the agenda. It's up to you. If you don't want that delegation to remain into effect, it's time of main, I'm just putting that forward to you. If you want me to send you a memo on exactly all that stuff, I can send you a memo with the law.
I just want to keep it that way, if that's the way it is, then, and-
Barrett?
My question is, has the law been changed since then?
The reason-
The reason I ask is when I took MMA, I asked him specifically that question, can it be delegated? And he said, "No, it has to be the town officer or county, we don't have a council, but council."
Okay, then, then here's, I did address that, because you had brought that up, and I thought it was an important thing for me to check out. So it says, "It's subject to approval," and this is section 17, "approval by the municipal officers or municipal official designated by municipal officers of the municipality in which the catered function or event is to be held." That's right in the law. That was put in in nineteen eighty-seven, so, but, and we didn't realize it until when we passed it back in two thousand seven. And I talked to the liquor enforcement inspector, Bob Simpson, who told me today that many of them, if not all, in smaller towns, they do it different ways, but a lot, most of them, I got from his conversation, the majority, but I, he didn't say that, do delegate it to the town manager or the town clerk. Banger, in some of those bigger towns, don't. They delegate it to some other official, because they have more people, but, and they don't have the town official, town manager, so. But he, by and large, had allowed that, with a few exceptions, and most of the towns and cities have essentially delegated that authority.
And we would delegate the one offs, not necessarily the broad liquor-
Oh, the cheater, the cheater, no, I don't want to hurt you.
These auxiliary, if you will, licenses, maybe. The main license, I think, should come to us.
No, absolutely, I wouldn't want to do that anyhow, because you might have to hold a public hearing.
That would be fun, laser at liquor there.
But yes, it would be only these catering licenses.
Make it go smaller. It might get more attendance, too.
I would probably think that's not a bad idea. Do it that way, to delegate them, because there could be a times crunch in here for these folks.
There has been, there has been an issue about-
Yeah, where if this one out, are you going to do a one night party, the town manager can sign it?
I will, that's the way I think it ought to be.
I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Move the second, that we delegate the liquor licenses to be signed by the town manager, in those cases where it's a one out effort.
There are some other delegation authorities that I will probably put in a memo, kind of explain them, and see whether or not any meeting you want to read and state, they may be in state already, but just refer them.
Okay, Anthony, did you get that?
Delegated the town manager for one time events?
Yes.
Catering events.
Is there any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by five zero. Next is a liquor license for Pete's Pig Southern Barbecue LLC, and I had thought we did that one, but we didn't evidently.
Well, I have a question on that.
Yeah.
It says for off premises catering.
This is catering, yeah.
This is again the same thing?
Yeah.
Well, except that it's a one time deal.
Well, only it's off premises, not on-
Yeah.
Yeah, but these are off premise licenses, these, this is-
And we do have to do one?
You don't have to, though.
No.
I think this is for resale, isn't it?
Well, I kind of-
Maybe we have a, he can answer-
Said this is not a new application.
All right, there he is.
He can answer a question there.
There we go.
I can answer all your liquor questions.
All right, let's hear it.
You can throw another one.
What you were just talking about for Sadie's, if I was to cater something here with my liquor license, then I would have to submit the same form that Sadie's did to do an event in town. I don't sell alcohol here, my business just happens to be here on off premises, for off premise catering, any municipality that I go to for an event, for a wedding, or graduation, or anything, when we're doing the alcohol, then I have to submit that same form that Sadie's did to you guys. This is, and I don't know why the state requires this, it's, if I was going to sell liquor in the town of Belgrade, I would expect to have a public hearing on it, because I'm doing business as a vendor in the town, actually selling alcohol, but we don't do that at all. It's all off premises. I mean, we do down the coast, and down in Portland, and all over the state, and we have to send it each time we do an event. This, for some reason, the state wants, and I thought in the past, because this is the third or fourth time I've been in, because I have renewed it every year, that the town manager was just signing it off. And they said, "No, it's not how it is, but it's not to allow me to sell alcohol and-"
No, you already have your license, pardon. I thought I saw the license right here. But you've, this is the problem.
This is a renewal.
I think I asked the same question the last time.
Yeah, it's just a renewal of the license. But anybody who comes in and caters in Belgrade, or it could be White Flower, or Reese's, or anybody, they're supposed to submit to the town the form that Sadie's did, that says, "We're having this event, it's a one day event, we're expecting this many people." And I did a huge one out in May of last year, and I got a call from the police chief, and I got a call from the fire chief, because they wanted to know what to expect, and that's the reason the municipalities want to know what's going on. So if there's, if there's some concern, a lot of this is going to happen there, is there going to be crowds, is there going to be potential conflict, they want to know about it. And so that's the, that's kind of a heads up to the municipalities, that this event's going on. So this is not a one time event, this is, this carries- This is for me to get my state license? For you, okay. To renew my state license.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Any more discussion?
Just doesn't make, just doesn't make any sense. It doesn't even sound like it.
Well, it kind of does to me, more of a statement.
Oh, I know, and it, no, I mean, it just didn't make any sense, and then, like it did the last time, like, that's what's going to be done, and that's what's going to be done.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor? All those in favor, please signify by, and it's five zero.
Thank you.
And the next item is one that's not necessarily new to us, it's for, I think your letter is outside the, or is it?
I think it's in here. It was on, I got an email.
An email, actually, for the parking issue.
It isn't a letter, it was an email addressing the parking problem with the Airbnb. Essentially, they're parking in the town beach parking lot, and the question is, can the select board write a letter to the Airbnb-
Owner.
Owner of the Airbnb, that's whatever it is, down there, to tell them not to park there. So here's-
Well, they're parking two places, they're parking in the public parking places toward the beach.
Right.
And then in the road was the other parking area that they were here selling up.
Here's what I found out. According to state law, the town has the authority to regulate traffic and parking, right?
The town, us.
The town.
The selectmen.
But you have to have a street and road and parking ordinance. Our town municipal street and road parking ordinance does not address, I mean, street road ordinance does not address parking. So we can put a parking ordinance together. The other thing we can do is, we can send a personal letter, under my signature or under your signature, it's chair, or whatever, and also put up no parking signs other than those who use the beach, on the beach part.
Away out, overnight parking, the parks closed anyway.
Then there's the issue of enforcement, and that's where you need the ordinance in place.
We went through that a few years ago, and I wasn't in favor of it. Who's going to go put, who's going to do it?
Who's going to do what?
Enforce the-
Enforce the parking.
Well, your co-enforcement officer and the town manager, there's two people that can do it.
I know, but you're not going to-
It's a tough, well-
Not in today's world.
Right.
Well, unless it's a huge issue, I would be in favor of sending a letter, and just so that they're aware.
The issue is that people that want to use the beach can't park in that area, so it becomes, you know, along the road, or wherever they get to use the beach, when in fact, it is a town lot for the beach. And Mr., forget his name, I should not show him.
Travis George.
No, no, Travis George is the one, the owner of that place.
Oh, yeah, I don't know that.
It's a foul, oh foul, Mr. Foul. He, he's making a profit from it, so he should be-
The owner.
At least, the owner, the owner should be-
I don't have a problem sending a letter and asking to-
Do you want to put signs up as well? That informs the B and B, the people that rent, that they can't park there.
Let's try a letter first, yeah.
Yeah, I would say letter, then signs, then-
Well, the letter goes to the owner, and the owner can tell them, but signs keep them off.
Now, is there a, is he an absentee owner, or does he manage the place?
I think he's still living in the house right about it.
Okay, so he, so he's there.
Right, right. Is it that, oh, he lives in Garden, I think it is.
Is that Father Rufus?
Yeah.
So I would send a letter to him, and then copy, you know, maybe the manager of the place, or whoever.
The Airbnb.
There's no manager.
Well, I don't know how that works, do you, there's nobody there?
They just sign into Airbnb, he's the owner, so you're-
He's responsible.
So there's nobody there monitoring this, I mean, it's just, yeah. All right, oh, the letter, and then, we probably are going to have to do the signs too, because he's not there to, to-
They enforce it all the time.
Enforce it.
Mary?
So are people parking there that are not using the beach, is that my understanding?
The people staying in the Airbnb are parking there.
So can you just put a sign up there saying, "Parking for beach?"
We had that at one time.
Yes, we did, we had parking for beach go is only, or something similar to that. So parking for use of the beach only.
I would think we'd want the, either the town manager, I can sign it, or whoever we want, we need to sign, send a letter to the owner.
Yeah.
And start looking at possibly putting signs up down there.
Needs to be a registered one.
Yeah.
Yeah, just see what a letter does first, and then go from there.
Can I get a motion to that?
I'll make that motion.
What is the motion?
We're going to send the owner a letter, registered letter.
Sign by.
Say, "Sign by."
Town manager.
That's fine.
At what point will we decide to put signs up?
I, what we're going to do is look at feasibility of doing that. I think if the letter works, and nobody parks there, you wouldn't want to put signs up, but I have doubts that the letter will work over a period of time.
But again, signs don't mean anything either. Speed limit, you get caught every day, the speed limit.
Right.
Let's do nothing.
Speak for yourself, Ricky.[1682.12]
Let me, uh, send the letter, and let me look at what used to be... I think it's important to the people in that area alone to know that there are... The people are using the beach, and that's what that parking area is for.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a set, we have a motion on the floor, and second to that, to that end. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify. Thank you.
Could you let Mr. Judge know what we did, Phil?
Oh, yes.
Thanks.
Uh, we have an abatement for Hammond Rumor that is outside your book.
So is it?
No, no way. That was the number, it's $278.60.
What was the reason?
It was double...
Correct the double taxation of this account.
Okay, I didn't see that. I'll make that motion.
Seven.
Move the second that we give the abatement. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify. And it's good. Somebody read your warrant, please.
Making motion to accept that?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Move the second we accept it? Is there any discussion?
Yes, I get the questions.
Yeah, I do too.
Blinds by design, final thing. How much do we pay for these blinds?
$1,400 and some odd dollars.
That says final payment. That's it? That's all we paid?
I think that's true, yeah. I can find that out for you. Send it over.
I thought we paid that once before, that's why I had to say...
Probably paid more.
It could be that that's the second payment, I don't know.
That's kind of what I thought, that was the question.
I think you have to...
The same ones.
In general, you pay fifty percent upfront.
And then they put them in?
And then you put them in, you pay fifty percent.
I, uh, there's a note, the, uh, there's a reference to Pitt Road, this road. Didn't we vote at one time to change the name of that? We're not in the pit anymore. Thought we would call it Town Office Road or something.
Name it after someone that won a honor.
No, I think we already... I think we changed the name.
I thought we did that too. I thought way back...
Has the sign not changed?
No, the sign's not gonna change. It should be. It was Town Office.
It seems to me when we were building, we made that decision to...
Yes.
We had people come in with, uh, you know, with options of things to call it, so... And we settled on one, so probably gonna have to look back and see what that was.
It would've been in 2015?
Yeah, but they can't...
Yeah.
There was something.
Well, we can go through the... I can look through the 911 sign, because that's not... That's handled through, uh, Gary...
Hold it for me.
You know, we might not have changed that because of the DEP permits and stuff, the...
The 911 thing?
No, DOT permits to get in here. Because it was a already existing road, and we did... There was a big deal about it, but...
And evidently, uh...
You can... You should be able to change roads as well, unless you have a concern about...
Am I right on that? Yeah. Because it was a big deal on it, because if we changed the road, it wasn't an existing driveway.
Yeah, we wasn't gonna be able to build in here.
That's right. Remember that, Mary?
The road signed up. Yeah, well, I guess now we have to build it, so...
So now we're gonna go with the one.
Yeah.
Before, this used to be Pitt Road, because you used to access it for the other property. So it was called Pitt Road, so the road, so we could build off that road.
It was a big deal about it. Anyway, but...
Any more discussion?
I'll check it.
What is a... What is a super auto eject?
It's for the fire department.
Fine, what is a super auto eject for the fire department?
What'd you find on the page?
I think...
Three.
Yeah, it's in there.
I don't know what it is.
Oh, that's a plug-in. Goes in the side of the truck. I'm sure that's what it is.
Oh, let's see, I can hook it up.
So when you put the plug-in in, when you start the truck, it automatically kicks the car right out.
Good, thank you.
I think that's on the new brush truck.
I think so.
More discussion?
I got... You got any more?
Go ahead.
He'll talk cleaning.
I got two.
Is that what we pay a month?
Eight fifty a month, is that what we pay?
The contract I gave is sixty-two hundred a year.
Well, if I did my math right, it's $12,200... I mean, $10,200.
I don't think that... Do we have that contract for that?
And just...
We need to find out on that. I mean, we don't need it tonight.
You want me to check on it and just report it? Or...
Is that a contract we led for a year?
That was like, is it in a contract?
Is it?
There was money put in the budget for cleaning services. I do remember.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't have a problem with the cleaning service, I have a problem if it's eight fifty a month.
Me too.
That becomes...
She cleans Monday's, Wednesdays, and Fridays, which is for twelve days a month.
Yeah, so...
That picks out... If I... If it's eight fifty a month, it's $10,200 a year.
I'll check that out. I thought it was awarding that, but maybe not.
And we didn't have anybody local put in for that, did we?
Mm-hmm.
That I remember.
No, no.
Thinking we did, we would probably...
And in the advertising, there was a lady from Belgrade that does cleaning. I noticed there was an ad in here when I was reading through it today.
Cinderella.
Cinderella, right. Cinderella Cleaning.
Most of our contracts, we usually have calls when we're terminated running time.
Yeah, that's right.
So I would question, we would go with $10,000 a year.
Yeah, I don't know why.
That doesn't sound like this board.
Yeah.
Whatever.
You'll check it out, and we'll get back to you.
Yeah.
More questions?
I would also look on the town warrant from the last meeting, because I think that we had an article addressing this, didn't we? I think.
For what now?
I thought there was an article addressing cleaning the town office.
I don't know. We have a contract, but they just need if it's...
On page number eight, it says Sunset Grill Food.
Same question I've got. What is that?
It was for the fire department, I think.
It is for the fire department.
Yeah, they had something, they must've had food brought over by Sunset... Or they went over there and ate. It was some event for the fire department. From what I read, I don't know, I'm just saying.
Well, it is under public safety, but...
Well, they just before they had some event, didn't the fire department just above that?
It may have been when we had the...
Service...
Super Sunday.
Oh, yes.
They brought platters of food over for everybody that...
Spruce Mountain Truck Medics, right above that.
I think that may have something with the brush truck.
It is a truck repair.
That's on the new brush truck that they're working on.
Evidently not.
No, this is... I believe this is when they maybe had that Super Sunday here where everybody, town employees go and everything for the training for the year.
Oh, yeah.
That might be what it is, but could you check on that too, please?
More comments on the warrant?
Now, wait a minute, I'm not done.
Have all the squirrels been deterred?
I don't know.
I had a question mark. I guess that was it.
I enjoy...
That's it.
We have a motion on the floor, it's the move the second we accept the warrant. We had discussion, all those in favor? And the warrant is completed. Town manager's comments?
Okay, I hope not to keep you wrong, but let me get through these. Couple things. Uh, we've had issues with agenda items coming in late, or sometimes the day of the meeting. So what I'm doing is sending out an inter-office memo, just to let you know, saying that the agenda items are due the Wednesday, like closing business on a Wednesday, but town manager or those of the delegates can approve for emergency purposes other agenda items. That way, we should limit the number of agenda copies that you get, you know, constantly changing. That's what I'm trying to do. Okay, limit that. So that'll be going out in all department heads.
I think we had the policy in place.
I understand.
Is it by Thursday? I didn't see it.
Thursday was it. Well, that was the last thing that we had established, Thursday was the deadline.
Okay, we can do it Thursday exactly for you? Yeah. Okay, so I'll just have that changed to Thursday if you would. Okay, letterhead, what's... We had... Was letterhead that had an address that did not go anywhere? An email address, so working with Howard, we set up a town manager at townbelgrade.com address for that letterhead. We're coming up with a new letterhead, it's gonna go on the drive, so everyone will have access to it. And they can just print it off, we don't have to buy the expensive box over there. So that's something that we're gonna do. The water, I know there was a lot of concern about the, uh, the, uh, water system and the...
Water quality.
Water quality issue. There had been a couple tests on the water system, one showed a fecal coliform count. There is no longer a fecal coliform count. The problem is pH, is high pH is harmful. So I talked to Don Driggs, who will be coming in in about a week and a half. I tried to get him here sooner. There's an adjustment you can make on the reverse osmosis system that will provide for the abatement of that alkalinity problem. So he'll be coming in to do that, so you just have to add some solution, probably some acidic solution, to bring that back in, reduce the alkalinity. So that should then allow us to begin drinking that water. It's out of... It's 9.72 is the last test, the previous test, so that was 9.52 pH, I believe it was 9.52. So it is high, and the drinking water standard is 6.5 to 8.5. So we'll bring it down somewhere around normal drinking water levels. You have a request from Penny. I sent you copies to post, put some flyers out there, a fact sheet on some issues going on in the school. I had looked at it to make sure there was nothing that would contradict what was going on in the vote on the 13th. It did not appear to be, but I sent her a copy around. I guess you've got a back copy, or it is by email. If you see a problem with that, I can change. I had told her she could go ahead and bring it down and quote, put it out there on the rack, but if you see a problem, and I'm not picking it up, I can help.
Is that what you just gave us?
No.
Yeah, well, yeah, I just...
Is that the same thing? Penny sent out an email that was different than that.
See, I didn't get it.
There was another email and another...
Lots of different, yeah, that's totally, yeah. That couldn't be me.
I didn't get it.
No.
I didn't get that email either.
Oh, the other one?
No.
I will forward it on to you. Because that's a breakdown in the budget.
Okay.
Just on this, the last bullet point, it says for some towns that have left their RSU as a result of it's been lower taxes, so that's...
Yeah, that's...
That's a little dodgy, because, I mean, it's not for all towns.
No, no, it's... What I think she was trying to convey is, if you're interested in this issue, there are some benefits perhaps.
Oh, yeah.
You cannot... You cannot get that data from DOE.
Yeah.
You cannot.
No, that's true.
They do not have that data for your town save money or spend more, so...
Well, after Danny gets done, I'll just give you a quick update on this subject.
Okay, the flagpole?
I want to comment on this. It should be made clear that it's not coming from the town, this is a...
Yeah, I think it says there's a group that they joined.
It does, yep. Well, does it?
Yep.
Follows at, say, Belgrade Community Central School.
I don't... I think it should be... Should clearly say this is not from the town, or is not a... This is not a recommendation from the town.
Right, but there are a lot of things out there that aren't from the town that appear to be fact sheets, but we can tell them to do what you want.
I mean, that's not a big deal, I don't think.
No.
It's not gonna diminish what's here.
We got some hands up, oh, yeah.
Howard?
We put on there a statement that said that the saving Belgrade Central School was a group of citizens. It doesn't indicate that... There's a bullet there that identifies who it is.
Oh, yeah, further down, I see, yeah.
So it clearly doesn't say that it's endorsed by the select board or endorsed by the town or...
I can address this back, because I'll take... If you want to hold your thoughts on that, I will go over, we've done quite a lot of research.
I didn't see it, Howard, thank you for pointing it out.
Go ahead, Dennis. Okay. Okay, the water test?
It was on the flagpole, I think.
The flagpole. I know that there's some interest in putting a flagpole up, and Gary's, uh, forces looked at some prices that I see are pretty high, we probably won't be able to come up with some funds to do it. However, I did ask Melissa to put, uh, provide me some information on where possible funds are. There is a new account, it's a facilities reserve account, and, uh, and I guess it was a setup recently with $2,158.79 that we could use for the flagpole. The question I would have for you is, if we provide, if I find a reasonably priced flagpole, is that an account that we can use the money from, or do you want me to come back and read the request? Let's be come up with that, so we can... The one that Gary has is around $2,300. He said that... I said, "We... That's a bit much for my budget."
Just a thought, if... If Hammond Rumors sells flagpoles, maybe they would help us out a little bit.
Sure, sure, I'll check it out. I just think that, um, we need a source of funding, and I don't think that was put in the budget, so...
Is that source of funding something we would use?
That's the question before.
Supposedly, the flagpole and the electric door openers.
They're in the budget, I thought.
Oh, you... They are in the budget?
Those are in the budget. That was my understanding too, I...
Definitely, I'd ask specifically.
You'd... I know the door opener for sure.
The door openers, yeah. I don't have the flagpole, I thought...
Well, I was told the flagpoles are...
Well, we'll find out. Because if they're in the budget, then that's a problem. It just raises issues, because I didn't know where the money was, and Melissa didn't think that they're improved.
Let's come to a consensus, if the budget... If it's not budgeted, can we use this account?
And what account was that again, Danny?
It's a facilities reserve account. It's $109.00.
With $2,100 in it.
And the price of the flagpole comes up...
Twenty-three hundred.
Well, that's the current...
Yeah, that was the price he got.
I think you can get one for less.
Yeah.
I'm like, I'm thinking I might give one for less.
Why in the thing?
Didn't you just approve seven hundred dollars of that account for the security system for the Belgrade?
No, not, 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 not a hundred ninety-nine, I mean...
Oh, what?
A hundred ninety-nine, that's a different account, that remaining funds.
There may be some money in that account in Belgrade's.
I guess, I think we should figure out what that account was set up for.
Well, my, I, I talked to Melissa, and she said it's a reserve account, so my understanding that the money's, or needed, we can build up to a certain amount. I haven't looked into the, because I asked her, my understanding, let me back up. My understanding is that each reserve account has a max. Is that not fair?
That's probably correct.
Yeah.
Okay, and this was over the max?
Usually it has to be later.
Yeah, yeah.
So it wasn't for equipment or...
Just facilities reserves, is what I understand.
I don't remember that account ever being set up.
Well, it must have been what the new accounting system was set up.
I think it was just, I think it was just authorized, wasn't it?
I can, I can...
I don't even know if it was.
I think we need more information, but...
We, we're not going to buy the flagpole for any of that.
We'll see, we'll get some prices, and then we'll figure out where we're going to come up with money.
Well, if it's budgeted, then budget it, so...
Well, it's also...
Okay, I sent out an email with some MMA information.
One meeting at a time, please.
I understand that several, I understand that some of you get that already, some of you don't, so if I come across something that's interesting, I'll just send it out to you. And for those that aren't getting it, you can sign up, and I can show you how to register for that, and get anything on MMA.
I get it, but just full, I still, in case I don't, anything you send, I'll take it.
Do you want to go back to the handicap door opener?
Yes, I was going to do that, too. I'm sorry, I just, the handicap door opener. I, I asked Gary about that. He said Danny McKenzie was going to give him some bids, you know, and I asked Danny. Danny thought he had already had some bids in, he was going to send me the information, but he only had, what he thought were, was an email containing bids, you know, cost, wasn't cost, it was some questions about, you know, measurements, dimensions and all this of the existing doors, so that they can design a system. So he came down today to make measurements, and he's supposed to get back to me with estimates for the cost. He had said either today or tomorrow, but it didn't come in today, so I'm assuming tomorrow, but I'll keep that on my to-do list.
While you're on that subject, I just, can you look when I, can you look at it?
Yes, not anymore, they, they actually...
Okay, they did come in, I thought they...
They came in, and there's some other things that they're going to come in this week. There was supposed to have been, it's Uriah, what's his name?
Yeah, Uriah.
A letter was supposed to have been sent to Uriah, and apparently that didn't settle well with him, so he's going to be sending a letter back. I haven't seen the letter that was sent, so I don't know. But there are issues that he's going to come in and fix, but I believe they've...
Got him here, didn't he?
Yep. And there's, there's some weaker springs on the doors that they're, you know, hinges, that he's going to come in and...
Where the hell are you on?
Should be in this league.
They put the snow brakes on until they were doing it one day when I was here, so...
The real question is, will they stay on with the free storm on the ice and...
They should, work any other place, but...
Okay. July fourth is a holiday. You have a board meeting normally scheduled on July fourth. I'd like to know heads up, how you treat that? Is it the day after?
No, we're doing it on the fourth. You're just going to miss the fireworks.
Well, I don't, it doesn't bother me one way or another. The question is, how do you want to handle that? Do you do it the day after? I can't remember what we're going to do.
I don't, I don't know what we do.
I don't know, I haven't had the fourth.
We could do it, do it then or the next week, it doesn't matter.
Well, then you, then you've got it two weeks before.
What we'll do is get a notice out if you're going to do it. The reason why I'm asking, it's an important reason, is that we're going to be setting the mill rate sometime toward the end of the, we're going to make recommendations, set recommendations to you for mill rate.
You may have talked about it, because my calendar says the next day, the fifth, it's like a...
Okay, so that's what we're going to do.
Probably you already said it.
That's probably the best, that's probably the best.
Yeah, just do the next day.
I think they do.
That's fine.
Won't affect that, our plans at all, though, Danny. Once it's one Thursday night, mate.
Well, that's fine.
Thursday, fifth.
So they would like to, as soon as possible, after we come up with some recommendations on the mill rate, that they meet the view so they can set, you know, redo it, prove it.
We, again, we rely on your run numbers.
We'll be looking in.
We're just approving, I like white robes.
There'll be, there'll be a set of numbers, and we'll talk about it.
I do the fifth, yes.
And the final thing I have, I believe, is that the central fire station has a building, it wants to establish a building committee. They've done some, not the central fire station.
Right about there.
The fire chief came to me and said, we'd like to set up a building committee. We've talked about, we've looked into some ideas about the building. We'd like to start a committee, so that we can get going. We'd like to have a select member of the select board, the town manager, a person from the public, whom they will recommend, and some people from the fire department. So they just wanted me to bring up to you tonight, they brought it in this afternoon, who would like to be a participant in that building committee?
You want to just one person from the board?
So Mike?
I really, I'd like to be on it, but when I'm on the fight of mine, I don't think it, it's a conflict of interest, so, no.
Was that a, did I check the meeting earlier than you know we're done?
No, you didn't.
Do you need to say you know who's going to be on it?
I...
Oh, Mike?
Mike.
Thought that that was...
The limiting factor...
Mike volunteered.
The limiting factor, Dennis, is NCIS.
I, I don't watch TV, no. Whoever's on the building committee, Mike, since you're going to be on here, you need to be aware that they, we had a brief discussion with the state, and they were receptive to, when you go in here, on the left-hand side, they felt there was room that they could give, you know, we would have to buy the land and then get a little bit of land off from David Stevens, and it could be, right, potentially right there. Just, just so you know that that option is potentially...
I thought that, like, Dale died, or is that just the building?
Well, they wanted, the fight about wanted the garage, and that's off limits.
Okay, that's what died.
We went up there, and they showed us the whole facilities, and then they just pointed out the fact that there was a section up there, and if we could get the land from David Stevens, it was a big area that potentially that's where, and if that worked with light about, I don't know. But I'm just throwing that out.
Thank you.
That it, Dennis?
That's all the answer.
Ernie?
Well, we've had some discussion in the past. In the past, I'll, I'll back up. In the past, the select board was actually considering doing an article to, but before the voters, to do the twenty-two step process. And then we had a committee formed, and because you get the data, and that cannon died. So recently, because of many of the meetings that we've had, there's been some concerns raised about RSU eighteen and what's going to happen, you know. So it was decided, and the board felt comfortable, to do a petition, and the people wanted to have an article to do, go through the process, put it to the vote, the voters to go through the twenty-two step process, which is still isn't fully withdrawn. But that's, would be a good, probably a good thing to do, so we would know where we stand. So basically, we've looked into, we have the petition, already, had already started, we're going to withdraw that petition, because we've now got numbers that it's going to be roughly ten to fifteen thousand dollars would be enough monies to have on that article to do the twenty-two step process. And then the person that was a consultant for one of these organizations that withdrew, they created a budget which was forty thousand dollars to establish a new district. So fifteen thousand dollars would be enough if the voters approved to go through the twenty-two step process. And we also looked at the data that's been, been provided on the committees that were looking at the facilities committees. And basically, if you, if you look at that, and Howard, you can insert stuff, if I get out of whack here, because Howard's been involved in this very long, but it really appears that Belgrade Central School, if there's any monies to be saved, that will be gone. So knowing that now, it's, there's three options. The other two options saves no money. So their goal in the RSU eighteen is to save money. If you look at all their presentations and everything, their goal is clearly to save money. And in order to do that, it really appears that Belgrade Central would be gone from Belgrade. They would just close it down, move everything to where they all build new facilities, you know, do whatever. So anyway, looking at this, this is where we came up with, save Belgrade Central School as a theme to put out there to the public. If you want to keep your local school, then we really should be looking at what are our options. And the twenty-two step process, what that will do for us is, it will come out the other end, and you'll know exactly where you stand as to, if we were to put up an article before the voters to withdraw, you would know what the cost would be, if there would be a cost or a save. It's going to cost us to do that, of course, but if there is a savings, then we would know what that is. And of course, the people then, we could make a decision, continue to run our local school, and tuition our students, school choice, which is probably what would be recommended. School choice, that way, whatever we agreed to pay to RSU eighteen, other people, if you want your kids to go wherever you want them to go, that's how much we would pay toward that tuition. That would be the maximum we would pay whatever tuition is, so. And in doing the research, there's been over twenty-some-odd schools that have withdrawn. Been a lot of really positive results from there, and you can't really talk to them all. You could, I guess, but it is obvious that there are several districts that have been very pleased with their withdrawal. They're very pleased, and it's shown, the reports that we're getting back is, some of the reports that we're getting back is, that they actually feel that they're getting a better education for, especially their local children. So that's kind of a quick update. We have connections with some other people that, and one of the people that looks like would be on board to help us out is the means board. Rob Moody is a friend and the president of Hinkley. So that's a resource that we think we're going to be able to use to potentially get more data and so forth. But I guess the bottom line that I'd like to communicate to this board is, and it just dawned on me today, is that, you know, in the past, we were ready to do an article to offer twenty, to offer the twenty-two step process to the voters. As a board, we can do that. Now we're doing a petition. And my request to the board, and I'm making this request to the board as a board member, is that we were at that point one time, but because of a lot of conflicts, and we did all kinds of research and everything else, there was some uncertainty. And now I think it's pretty clear what's in the works. And if we wait until they make the decision, it's going to be too late to go through the twenty-two step process. We're going to be tied into it, and we'll have no option. So my request to the board is that the board would step up and really think about this and say, hey, we will do an article, and don't bother to do the petition, because it's a lot of work to do the petition. It is the question, do we think we can get the signatures? But it's a lot of work to do the petition. And if the board just steps up and says, hey, we will do the article, now that we know it's fifteen thousand dollars, which we can take out of the general fund, and it's something I think many on this board really feel that we really need to look at this. And you know what? To go through the twenty-two step process, if that's approved, then we'll know where we stand. Then there would be an article to withdraw or no article. So that's the school.
How many signatures are required in a petition?
Ten percent of the last school that tours elections.
Well, one hundred and twenty-five, one hundred and thirty.
Should that take that long?
Well, it is not going to take that long, but it's a process. I mean, it's not that it's going to take that long, it's just that this board is on board with...
It would put this thing to bed, if we just do it, and find out, do the steps, find out, yay or nay.
I agree with doing the steps. Step one is a petition. That's what you do. Now, if the board can bypass that, I, I think the petition is, in my mind, I want to see those signatures. I want to see people in this community stand up and say, we want to do this. The other thing that I, I, where did you get the fifteen thousand at? Where did that come from?
From the current superintendent at Northport, who was a consultant and who dealt with the process there. And her, her experience as a finance, school finance instructor at Thomas, the graduate program, advised that most towns who have gone through the process, prior to what would be done if the withdrawal was approved finally at the end, setting up the new school system, has been about twelve to fifteen thousand dollar expenditure.
Well, that seems low to me.
Well, well, setting up the actual, setting up if we was provoked to actually withdraw, then it's body grant.
That, that would be...
Yeah, forty to fifty.
Well, the actual, setting up the district. But that's after, that would be a different, that would be a vote after the fact, after you got through the twenty-two, because the twenty-two step process is just going to give you some numbers.
It's a mandatory process. You don't bypass that process for anything.
No, you don't bypass it, but when you come out the other end, you also know what you have. So then, then you can make the decision to...
I would argue that you don't have any option to eliminate the petition.
You don't?
A petition requesting withdrawal from a regional school unit is signed by ten percent of the number of voters in the municipality who voted for the governor in the last election, present as a municipal officer. That's step one, right there.
I'm afraid if we, if we bypass the petition, that some, a lot of people, I think we're cramming it down their throat.
I don't think you can.
Well, the petition is to put, the petition would be to put a question on the ballot at November as to whether or not you wanted to continue, wanted to investigate and do the fact finding necessary to then present to the town a motion to withdraw. And then the town votes on it, simple majority carry.
Yeah, it's already...
Simple majority carries, the initial, the initial process.
All right, as, we have to have the petition, so let's...
Yeah, there's no, no, and I only brought it up because I thought of it today. I knew back then, we was talking about doing it, but obviously, Howard is, we have to do the petition, so it's fine. We're all set to do it.
I think that that would be, I, I, may I share one other thing?
Yeah.
Couple of us went to the PTO meeting at the school, last Thursday, the last meeting then. And what surprised me is that no one seems to be aware of what is going on within the RSU facilities committee, administration, et cetera. And the thing which really put a flag up to me was at the last, I believe it was the last elector meeting, if it wasn't the last one, the one before that, when Carl was here?
Last one.
And you asked questions relative to some expenditures that were in the budget that you were wondering about. And his comment was, in relation to class size for, I think it was first grade you asked about, and the fifty thousand dollars for the nutrition program, which was a subsidy because they're not charging enough to cover their costs. His comment was, that's what consolidation is going to take care of, because I can run the cafeteria in one school for five hundred kids with three people, but right now, I'm having to run it with three people in each of two schools, each running two hundred and fifty kids. So consolidation is the solution for that. My understanding was that the facilities committee really had not come up with any kind of conclusions or any kind of direction yet. And I believe that that's officially true. But I think the new superintendent pretty clearly put his cards on the table, indicating where his thoughts are coming from. Just a, just a, just a point to be aware of. And, and the people at that meeting, the staff at the school has no idea that consolidation is a very serious part of, and the only thing they've identified as a way to save any money. I think the town needs to know that. And we're not trying to be alarmist about it. We're not saying that the school's doing a bad job. You ought to listen to the superintendent from Northport. She's saying that they have reduced taxes significantly. I believe, don't quote me, but I believe that the comment was thirty percent. They have increased their budget by over a million dollars for their local school, and they are self-funding a three million dollar addition to building. They're very similar to us. High land value, small population, RSU, basically, getting more money from them than, than what they, what they're getting from anywhere else.
Okay. I have one other thing I'd just like to bring up.
Okay.
When we do set the mill rate, we anticipate a relatively large increase in taxes. I suggest that the board have a letter that we draft up, so when people call in here, Danny, or the people that answer the phone.
When the taxes went up?
This is how we answer. That way, they're going to get, just exactly, this is, we saved the town money, and it's not our fault. It needs to be clearly explained to the people.
And it's a one-story thing.
It's a one, yeah, that's what, and I think it needs to come out, what we feel we're going to be telling the people, because we've gone, it's just unbelievable. Well, you know, Danny, you've been around a long time. We, we, we really watch the towns gall us, and then sometimes we go in one year, then wasteland, but really, this, this is ridiculous. You know what your taxes have done in the last ten, fifteen years, and if it doesn't stop, we lost, yeah.
Now, we're blaming you now.
Yeah, I know. No, but I just, I just think this is an opportunity to look at something.
We have to sign the appointment papers, too.
They've been handed down.
I haven't seen.
Is that the reserve?
I signed, well, three, you signed one, then I'm signing one.
Oh, no, went that way.
I, um...
It's down, it's down.
Are you ready for one more?
Yeah.
I'm a little concerned, I gotta, somebody asked me to check on this today. I understand we got a call, a person got a call from CMP again, that they were going to shut the power off at the lake station.
I have not heard anything. Did you hear anything?
Yeah, so, I, I, Nick got the call first, and I got the second. But essentially, when there's a three-week period between warrants, like a three-week period between select board meetings, that gets sent every time. The only difference is that bill's supposed to actually go to Melanie, who goes and suggests to the fire department, so you only hear about it when it accidentally gets put in their mailbox.
No, this was a phone call.
Yes, yeah, no, they get a phone call too, but there's a, there's a warning as well.
But they don't shut it off, just the money. I mean, I just look back at the warrant. If you guys take a minute to look back, it looks like you paid two of them. One for ninety-one dollars and one for eighty-nine ninety-four. Two of this last one.
Well, that one may be the one that is causing the overdue notice. I'll have to check into this.
I guess, well, from what I got from information, the call went to you, but if you don't know any call...
The call went to me?
Yeah.
Did they say town manager?
Uh, they said call Danny, and I think, I think Danny called Melanie, because she was out at, was out, but got ahold of her.
I heard from Dan.
I think probably, oh, maybe, it was Dan, I'm sorry, not Dennis.
I, I, I told him.
Yes, I'm sorry, I read it wrong.
Let's get him now.
Yeah, I was just trying to get that hammer ready.
Anything else?
I thought I had a, I thought I had a period of time, what is it called?
It's over. You get four days.
I mean, this shouldn't be happening.
Use that up last time.
If you understand what is happening, and we have to correct it, somehow that bill notice got put into the fire department. I don't know, we, we, we mail. We'll stop that problem, okay? And that's why you got an over-the-notice, because it went up to the fire department. Melanie didn't get it. So, but the issue about one over month, one...
Yeah.
Yeah, that's an issue that we have to see what's going on.
It is, it isn't one month. I mean, I can tell you that, but anyways. I just wanted to make you aware that it did happen, I'm not throwing anybody under the box. I just, we don't need to...
I'll be the next meeting.
Yeah, the next meeting, I'll do it.
Want the lights on when you go to the fire department?
Well, you want to let the doors open. You ever tried to open them doors? Well, you want electric doors, do it, you ever tried to open them doors?
That's what you drive a truck through.
Well, when the power goes out, the generator comes on, we just set them off.
Anything else? Ken?
Yeah, two things, upcoming dates, I don't see a thirteenth on here, when there's a town vote on school. That's just an observation. Number two, road committee, the, it's still the same. What is, what is this thing? Is the, is it the fourth, I think it's the fourth one, is it even?
It was on the calendar. I looked at it today.
Yeah, it's ready.
Okay, I didn't see it on the upcoming dates here.
Oh, no, it's on the calendar.
Oh, it's on the calendar, no.
The town calendar.
It's on the town calendar.
But, but you raise a good point. I, I believe what you're saying is, perhaps at the bottom of the agenda,
Yeah.
upcoming events should be noticed, so that people get the agenda, or see it online.
Yeah.
If they do, it would be helpful to people. And it would be helpful to people coming in, that's a good point.
The next, the next agenda will have it on. If you put them on, because this, we have one more meeting.
Oh, right, right, but I think the point that he was making is, it'd be helpful to him and others, to have it on, yeah, so we can do that from now on.
I don't think all committee meetings get on there, I don't think the long-range planning, what do we call that?
Well, if they meet at the end of the month, it wouldn't be long.
Yeah, I got it, yeah, but it hadn't been on it, I just, it is good to have it on there.
Any special events like the election should be on.
You ready to motion to adjourn?
No, just a second. Go ahead.
Does the town manager still chair the road meeting?
We can put, I don't know if they did in the past, I know that when I was here prior to...
It hasn't been the last town manager's tenure.
Yeah, in my tenure, I was chairing the road committee as well. So I don't know what happened.
So wasn't Greg. Greg did too.
Yeah, I did when it first started, and then turned over to town manager.
So I'd be setting up the agenda in the line.
That's my question.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not here on the twentieth, Mr. Barrett will be chair. I'll be in Montana. Don't call me.
You'll be I O.
Don't do anything, just call Barrett. And we get a motion to adjourn in the morning.
We waited for all that?
I'll make that.
Got a motion to adjourn and a second, all those in favor?
I got a couple.
Too late.
Done.
They kinda get home at times, do they?
No, yeah. Hey, you can tell when it's quarter off, he's right there.
Anthony, make sure the sign is switched for the...
You couldn't catch him.
Just, just as a, you don't have to lose the news if you don't want it.